So we're going to have a different format for this part of the event. I'm going to be asking the council candidates questions and they'll have one minute to answer the question. We'll warn them with a yellow card. Maggie's got the yellow card and red card. Yellow card when they have 10 seconds, red card it's time to stop. And the reason we do it this way is so everyone has a chance to get something across to the audience and you know, just it's a fair, you know, fair way to do it and they can get something across to you guys. So, and again, you can text questions to 910-264-8955 if you have questions for the candidates. So Election Day is November 7th and early voting starts October 19th. The candidates this year for Wilmington City Council in alphabetical order are incumbent Neil Anderson, Salette Andrews, Catherine Bruner, Marlo Foster, David Joyner, John Lennon, and incumbent Kevin Spears. So to start with, and I'm going to start with you Neil, can you please take a minute to introduce yourself and tell us why you're running?
Gladly. My name's Neil Anderson. Been living here since 2001. I'm a small business owner in the furniture business. My wife of 27 years, Jarrett, is right here. We moved here because, wow, most people move here. We love it. And I think that's why am I running? I love this city. And what attracted us is what attracts so many people and keeps people staying here. It's the people, it's the natural resources, but it's also just the personality, the vibe of the place. So I'm running for the same reasons I ran in the past, to try to continue as we grow, like the mayor just said. We've been, we were, we've been discovered. People are moving here and they're not going to stop. And we need to try, I try every day when things come before us, to try to make, think about it in terms of how do we maintain that personality as a community? And then secondly, I have children, I have three children, two that were raised here and gone, and one in high school at Hanover. And I want to, I always want to look at things as how can I embrace entrepreneurs, people, business, the existing business community to create jobs for them to come back, to build, that's what, when I say focused on the future, I'm focused on our children's future. Thank you.
Salette?
I want to thank the Greater Wilmington Business Journal for staging this event and to all of you for getting up early and coming here to talk about the future of Wilmington. And also to my fellow candidates, having been in elected office before in town council in Arizona, I know what it takes to put yourself out there and, and run for office. So thanks to all of you too. I am Salette Andrews. I'm running for Wilmington City Council. I'm a small business owner, an Air Force veteran, a Gold Star mom, and a grandmother. And I'm running to make Wilmington into a great 21st century city, to keep Wilmington a great 21st century city that works for everyone. And again, thank you for being here.
Catherine?
Good morning. Thank you all so much for being here. I moved to North Carolina in 2010. I was stationed in California when I received orders that the military wanted me to move across country by myself to a town I had never even heard of. I was terrified. I didn't realize I was moving home. I worked for the Coast Guard Command Center, running emergency operations for the state of North Carolina. I got out of the military in 2017 and since then I've started my own company. I've had the opportunity to graduate from both the city and the state level leadership program. And now I'm running for city council. Wilmington is very unique. Just look around this room. We might be a small city, but we are full of powerful people. And we need dynamic, innovative leadership that is proactively problem solving. And that's why I'm up here, because I want to support all of you and I want to protect the future of Wilmington. Thank you.
Marlo?
Good morning, everyone. Quick show of hands, whether you relocated here or whether you've lived here your entire life, how many of you want to make Wilmington your forever home? Quick show of hands. All right, well, we've got one point of commonality to start this discussion today. Wilmington is my forever home for my wife of almost 25 years, Evelyn Foster, for my new two kids, Christiane and Noah Foster, and for my mom and dad that I had to relocate here after my dad broke his neck last year. I hope we leave this room with three additional areas of commonality. And that are, they are, one, ensuring that we're focused on housing affordability as a Wilmington City Council. That is perhaps the greatest challenge we have in the city of Wilmington. The second is public safety, ensuring that we're taking a look at juvenile crime more closely and the opioid and fentanyl crisis. We have seen over the last couple of weeks a spike in gun violence involving juveniles, and that is extremely concerning to me. And the third area is job creation. Everybody cannot be an Encino or a Live Oak Bank, but we need to focus on small business incubation and return to trade disciplines. Thank you very much.
David?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you to the Business Journal for hosting us today. My name is David Joyner and I spend my Fridays with about 55 of our neighbors who are addicted to methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, and alcohol. And I do that because I currently serve you as an Assistant District Attorney. And our elected DA Ben David has tasked me with launching our Veterans Treatment Court and being the prosecutor for our Community Recovery Courts. I prosecute impaired driving cases, firearms offenses, and violence against women. And I'm the only candidate in this race who works full-time in public safety. I'll bring that perspective to our conversation about public safety and policing here in Wilmington. At davidforwilmington.com, you'll see my full platform, which talks about transportation, housing affordability, and protecting our environment. I'm running for city council as the son of two retired public school teachers, an eighth generation Eastern North Carolinian. I went to UNC Chapel Hill and then Campbell Law School before moving back to southeastern North Carolina, where again, I'm proud to serve you as an Assistant District Attorney. Looking forward to talking to you about my platform today.
John?
Good morning. My name's John Lennon. My whole career's been about getting things done and that's what I want to do for you. I was born in Washington DC, went to NC State, met the love of my life there, who's from Wilmington. We got married, moved here 25 years ago, have raised three kids, all of whom graduated from New Hanover. Since that time, I've been on the Mayor's Convention Center Task Force, was on the Airport Authority for eight years, served on the North Carolina Board of Transportation for four years, and most recently I've been on the City Wilmington Planning Commission for three years. Our city is a fantastic place to live with unbelievable opportunities, and we need to make sure that those opportunities exist for everybody. And I'm excited to help get that done and I appreciate your vote.
Councilman Spears?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Councilman Kevin Spears. Let me first just say it's so great to sit next to one of the Beatles. But I am Kevin Spears. I am a Wilmington native, 46 years. I am a product of my environment, a graduate from Cape Fear Community College, a graduate from UNCW, a graduate from John T. Hargit, the greatest high school in the, in the world. You know, and just Wilmington is my passion. It has always been my passion. I've tried to leave Wilmington so many times. Every time that I've leveled up educationally, socially, I feel like it's my opportunity to leave Wilmington. But I've never been able to leave. I raised my family here, my sons, my daughter. Now my two grandchildren live here. We're trying to create a legacy. I'm trying to create a legacy. I'm actually trying to be one of the best people to ever sit in this position. You know, if you talk about that bridge, I'd love for the new bridge to be named the Kevin Spears Memorial Bridge. Thank you for coming today.
All right, for this next question, I'm going to start with Salette and then go back around. So this question is, if elected, how will you go about managing the city's needs when it comes to ongoing growth?
Thanks for that question. Thanks for making me go first. So, growth is absolutely a balancing act. It's something that is going to happen. It's not something that you can be for or against. It's absolutely happening. We're a product of our own success. We're blessed with this beautiful natural environment, this beautiful coastal community, riverfront community. And so the growth is going to happen. The question is, how do you balance that with keeping up with our infrastructure? Traffic is the number one concern that was stated by our citizens in our last community survey in 2021. It's an ongoing concern for everybody. Flooding is also an issue. So absolutely, keeping up with the infrastructure as we keep up with the growth is definitely a priority for me. When I was in the Air Force, I was an air traffic controller and I learned that you have to work together, compromise, and get big things moving. So thank you.
Catherine?
So we can't stop people from having children. And we can't stop people from moving here. But one thing that we can do is focus on the future impact of trying to create affordable housing while still preserving our land and our trees. Our market right now, it's basic economics. We have a low supply, which is causing a higher demand, which is creating that price increase that we're all seeing. But the reason that no one's able to actually fix the housing problem is because we're continuing to make it more difficult to actually build houses. We need to simplify this process. And Tyler Newman, I told you in the back that I was going to quote you up here. He said in the Business Journal that North Carolina is the leader in business, and now it's the time for us to be the leader in housing.
Marlo?
Yeah, I think this ties directly into our discussion of housing affordability, right? We know that Wilmington is out of space to grow horizontally, but we do know that people are continuing to come. So we've got to focus on vertical growth, we've got to focus on increasing density, and we've got to focus on mixed use developments. Part of what's important to the business community is certainty, right? As I've talked to developers, they say, look, we want to be partners in solving this affordability crisis that we're experiencing in the city, but we need to have clear understanding of the regulatory burden and the permitting process that we have to go to. We need to make a little bit of money, not a lot of money, and that keeps us coming back. And then we're also ready to come to the tables as partners to really address this housing affordability crisis. And we're going to have to be creative, we're going to have to be visionary, but we need to do it as the business community and as elected officials working together.
All right, David?
Thanks. So when it comes to housing affordability, my litmus test is to say, can our teachers, nurses, and first responders afford to live and work in Wilmington? And if our teachers, nurses, and first responders cannot afford to live in Wilmington, then we do not have affordable housing. I've talked about throughout this campaign, my belief that we need to grow, or excuse me, we need to build more densely, we need to grow higher. And many of you are familiar with that platform point. But the question ultimately is about how are we managing the growth? One of our blind spots is, as candidates so far, I haven't heard other candidates talk about our need for healthcare. We need to be incentivizing healthcare providers to move to Wilmington and open practices. We have too many people who are waiting too long to get the healthcare that they need because it's not an emergency. One of the things that I think we need to pay attention to is our aging population, making sure that people can age in place with dignity, making sure that our elders have the healthcare they need. I'm really encouraged by the strides that Novant has made around cancer care because we know that cancer appears more prominently in aging and growing populations. So in addition to housing affordability, in addition to a robust transportation system, we need to focus on healthcare opportunities in Wilmington too.
John?
I wake up every morning and thank God for the growth that we've had here. Growth provides opportunities, it addresses affordable housing, it addresses healthcare, it addresses economic opportunities for all of the citizens. I'm in this group, quick show of hands, how many people in this room moved here from somewhere else? There you go. Thank you to all of you for moving here and providing the economic opportunities that allow us to address these issues. There's a lot of work to do with growth. Transportation's a big part of that, I'm sure we'll get more into that. On the Planning Commission, we've been blessed with the new land development code that has helped address affordable housing, that has helped address the growth issue by working towards vertical growth, by working towards the inclusion of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, things that directly impact the affordable housing issue. We can build our way out of the affordable housing problem, or we can tax our way out of it. I'll choose the first.
Councilman Spears?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. If elected, how will you go about managing the city's needs when it comes to ongoing growth?
Well, I think you have to focus on the people that are here. We spend so much time focusing on who's coming, but we actually need to focus on what we have. And so we're seeing a lot of change go on in our communities. And people, if the people who work here or the people who are here, if they had access to those resources, the dynamics of what we're doing here would change. We're spending so much time focusing on who's coming, but we're starting to overlook the people that are here. So if we change that folk, and I'm not saying that I don't welcome people coming here, but I'm saying that we do need to be more intentional about how we take care of the people that are here, how we allow access to the resources that we have in, in every aspect of how we do business in Wilmington, whether it's employing people, whether it's taking care of people, what it is, job creation, we have to be more intentional. So that, that in itself is the solution.
Councilman Anderson?
Well, as a council member, I often get asked from citizens of this country, how are things in the city? And it's tough to answer that question concisely, but I say, you know, I would rather, you know, I would rather manage through growth than manage through decay. And, and that's really what we're faced with. And so, you know, I think of, and I think of growth, it's so many layers, it's not just housing. Most folks ask me, what are you going to do about Shipyard Road or this street? Those are state roads. So a lot of times, we don't really have a lot of control. I do have good news for you. Our numbers are to the point, I'm on the Wilmington MPO, served there for the last four years, and that's the planning organization that connects with the NC DOT. We've got, we have one overpass in this city for the last 50 years. We're about to have a second in September. And there's six or seven more coming in the next eight or nine years. So that's going to help greatly with those heavy traffic roads. We're going to have to put up with a lot of orange cones in the meantime, but it's a good thing. The future land use plan, we've talked, others have talked about infill and they've talked about density. We now designate where that should be and where it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be in the middle of neighborhoods and disturb our neighborhoods. It should be on our collector streets and main roads.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson.
And we can use our conditional district zoning to control that.
Thank you. I'm going to start with you now, Catherine, on this next question. What would your top three priorities be as a member of the city council?
So my first priority is I think that we need to fill some of the vacancies in our police force. And also considering hiring more police officers. Our police department runs 300 to 500 calls a day. We need to decrease the quantity of calls that each one of these officers is having to deal with and increase the quality of their interaction that they can have with our community. In addition to that, Katrina's sitting over here and we were talking about homelessness earlier today, our homeless population in the last year has increased from 347 to 558. And it costs the Wilmington taxpayers significantly more to put these people into emergency services like jails and hospitals rather than connecting them with our community resources. And we're always going to have those people that maybe they don't want to change their lifestyle, but we need to remember that they're human beings and our neighbors. And it's very important for us to take the police department and our community resource providers and make sure that they're cultivating strong relationships. And so from a crime aspect and a homeless aspect, I think those things overlap and that brings us back to all of us as a community. I think we need to be focusing on the businesses that we have here, making sure they feel supported so that they stay here. So as each, a very innovative entrepreneur that we have, a lot of you in this room, comes with, up with great ideas.
Thank you, Catherine. Marlo?
Again, I said this in my opening and I'll reiterate, my three focus areas, housing affordability, public safety, and job creation. Going a little deeper under housing affordability, the city has a very specific role in terms of gap financing, helping developers compress the price of land, which is a primary driver of the cost of development, and also homeowner assistance program. So when we're looking for those first time home buyers, the city invests in that program. Under public safety, again, I'm very concerned about the juvenile crime rate going up post-pandemic. I always like to say, I want kids to have no time for crime. My daughter and my son, when they get out of Hargit, at the end of the day, one goes to the tennis court, the other one goes to the taekwondo dojo. They don't get home till 8:30, they do their homework, and then they go to bed. They have no time for crime. And I want that for every child in this community. And the last area is, is job creation. We have explosive growth. We know that, right? And the trade disciplines are where we need to bring our focus back in the elementary and middle schools so we can have electricians, HVAC techs, and other trades that can fill the jobs that are critically needed in the community.
Okay, David?
As I bring my perspective on public safety from the courthouse to the council chambers, I'll have three additional priorities which I want to talk to you about today. Those are housing affordability, transportation, and the environment. We've talked a bit about housing affordability. Let me tell you my plans for transportation. I believe that the future of Wilmington transportation is rail. I do not believe that the future of Wilmington transportation is private passenger vehicles. We need to improve and maintain the roads that we have, but we need to be looking at the future. That means connecting us to the statewide Amtrak system with a Wilmington to Raleigh route. That means realigning our rail system downtown so that we can get cargo and freight more quickly into Brunswick County with less rail crossings downtown to increase pedestrian and traffic safety, and using that space for a potential light rail project in the future. Let's talk about the environment. Wilmington, North Carolina is uniquely positioned unlike any other state when it comes to our resources around solar, wind, aquaculture, kinetic and thermal energy in the intracoastal waterway. We need to be recruiting green businesses. We are in a national green rush and those need to come here and thrive in Wilmington.
John?
So the first three things I would do in 2014, this community passed a transportation bond, and it ain't done. And that's unexcusable to me. The Martin Luther King Center, the multi-use paths to nowhere, there's no reason those projects shouldn't be done. That would be one of the first things because those projects help mitigate problems that we're dealing with today. Here we tried to plan ahead and they're not done yet. Second thing I would do is continue the work that council has done over the last several years of looking at city employees. There's too often a sense that those that work in government should be lower paid and that's sort of the job of last resort. That's ridiculous. That's like going with the lowest bidder. We need to make sure we have the best and brightest. The third thing I would do is to make sure that this city is an open armed place for business and new development. I can't tell you how many people in my world have said the city of Wilmington is one of the hardest places, places to develop a project, and that shouldn't be the case.
Councilman Spears?
So I'm going to shock you with these three things, but I want you to listen closely. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. But not in the ways that you hear diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity in how we do everything in Wilmington. Equity in how we do everything in Wilmington. Inclusion in how we do everything in Wilmington. Again, business-wise, job, how, socially, let's play it. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. All of us, how we create, how we play, how we earn, it helps us all, not just a small portion. You'll see, and if you've paid attention to the past four years, you've seen me intentionally try to close the gap. You've seen me try to bring us closer together. You've seen me be a mechanism for transparency in Wilmington city government. And so that's what I'll focus on for the next four years. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Well, I probably have more like six, but we'll go with three. The first one is going to be infrastructure. I was talking about that before. And I think we've, we've got to continue to lobby the state. We've talked about the bridge. That's going to be huge to try to get that done. It's going to be a big lift. I think of things like John mentioned, we have, we got setback with costs of doing things with the pandemic. We have some projects to complete. That would be top of list with the parks bond and our transportation bond. The second would be public safety. We've given a lot of tools to our, to our police department with the Sting Center and cameras because they can't be everywhere and you can't hire enough police officers. We, we have ShotSpotter is a great tool, but most, the biggest problem was we're losing officers. We'd get them, train them, and they'd go elsewhere. So we've worked hard and we always try to plug those gaps to retain those police officers that we do recruit. And we've got to keep that pipeline full and keep our police force fully, fully employed. The third piece would be employment, jobs. Most of you here are here because it's the Business Journal. We need to make our community, it is, it needs to improve. The mayor read off a bunch of stats for you. Well, that's because of the hard work to try to create a great business environment here in Wilmington.
Salette?
So the first issue is, is I'm going to get my six in because I'm going to combine the, the first issue is all of the above and related to the last question we talked about. It's balancing growth, housing affordability, and transportation and infrastructure. And some of the ways that we do that, we've already talked about, but we definitely need an increase in supply of housing, building up. We don't have much room to build out. Most of our development is redevelopment. Also, public safety, very, very important that our police force is responsibly resourced, looks like the community it serves. We do have a problem as far as in the public sector and in the private sector with jobs right now. We're at 3.3% unemployment and we need to continue to be able to have the flexibility to recruit not only police officers, other city employees as well. Very important. And finally, last but definitely not least, the environment, so important. Transit-oriented development is another way to help the environment. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. This question, I'm going to start with Marlo. It comes from the audience and the question is, can you address equitable access to services and jobs through public transportation?
Sure. I think, you know, Wilmington has a distinct challenge, right? We are growing as a city, which is a positive. And when we think about public transit, we have great public transit north to south, not so strong east to west. And a lot of the growth in Wilmington is occurring east to west. So I know WAVE has been very creative in some of its approaches with, you know, kind of city designated Uber services and small vans and things like that. I just think we have to be creative and visionary as a city. Not every job need for, the person needs to go to every job on a large bus. We need to have smaller cars, smaller mobile units to take people to jobs. And we need to make sure, as we talk about issues like housing affordability and earning a good wage, that the public transit system matches where the job growth is in the city and matches the economic opportunities for every citizen.
David?
So when we talk about our WAVE transit system, I think one of the highlights for us recently has been these point-to-point services where people can use virtual bus stops or virtual pickups and map out where they're going to go for a relatively cheap price, get picked up, get where they need to be on one of these microbuses. That's wonderful if you live in the county and need to go somewhere in the county. We have not expanded that into the city. And so we need to continue to study if that's a feasible, sustainable solution for us here in the city. What I will tell you about WAVE transit funding is that after the federal government, the city of Wilmington spends the most money of any entity on WAVE transit. Do you know who spends the next largest amount of money? It's not the county, it's the university. So we need to be making sure that we as city councillors in Wilmington are fully funding our commitment to WAVE transit. We are not proposing reducing funding to WAVE transit. We need to stay at that commitment so that we can make sure that people who live in the city can get where they need to go. I agree that we need to expand routes. We need to study and make sure that we know where those, that those routes go, excuse me. And last but not least, we need to be a culture shifting, we need to have a culture shift focus to make sure that folks know that WAVE transit is not just for folks who don't have a car, it's a real option for everybody who needs to get around.
John?
I think public transit's an integral part of any large metropolitan statistical area, but I also want to make sure that the citizens of Wilmington aren't subsidizing public transportation for everyone outside the community. So I think it's really important to realize that by all the things we've talked about today, density, mixed use developments, by creating employment opportunities near where people live, the need for public transit, the need for additional cars on the roads goes away, or is at least diminished. So I think it's a bigger issue than simply saying we need a bus to go from point A to point B, because there does need to be a completely sustainable funding method for public transit. And the entire region needs to participate in that, not just the city of Wilmington.
Councilman Spears?
Can you read the question?
Sure. The question is, can you address equitable access to services and jobs through public transportation?
Oh yeah. We need, we understand that, you know, Wilmington is a unique place and everyone does not have the same access. Everyone does not have the same great employer or, you know, ability to get around. You know, we missed a huge opportunity in funding last year where they would be sustainable without us having to come back to the table every year to try to find out how to do things. But also understand that, you know, you have to, I was in Mexico four years ago during this time, and the bus ran. You didn't even have to be at the bus stop. Like if the bus was passing by, you could stick your toe out and it would stop and you can get on. And those are, you think that's like, wow, that's unique. But it's things like that that we really need because it doesn't work traditional job, eight to five, nine to five, four, oh, just innovation. four, oh, just innovation, got the red card.
Councilman Anderson?
The short answer is not yet, but planning is how you get there. The future, I mean, our, our city, there was a lot of, you know, you have the city core and you had a lot of sprawl, a lot of larger, larger pieces of property, people spread out. It's, it's virtually impossible to create a system that can service that kind of community. You know, Mexico City, I don't know, what is it, 20 million people? I mean, we, we now know, if you look at our future land use plan, planning is how you get there. And if you haven't looked at it, it sounds awful boring, but it's got little maps, just like USA Today, USA Today, you don't even have to read it. Just look at the maps and it'll tell you what the plan is. And that plan ends up creating nodes as the city gets bigger. Midtown, you know, Mayfair, landfall area. And once you have that, you can build a system, create a system, or design a system that will service those areas where most employers are. Ultimately, long-term, you get the rail out of the center of city. You have, you might be able to, hopefully we can afford to put a rail on that. And there's so many apartment complexes and employers there that would take a lot of people off the road.
Celeb?
So I've toured our WAVE facilities quite recently, very impressed. A bus pass, the regular price for a monthly bus pass is $80, which is amazing. Anybody else who pays for gas and parking, it sounds like a great deal. For seniors and veterans, it's half price, it's $40 a month. So we need to get the word out there that it is a great affordable option. I think we also need to increase the affordability of the transit system by extending the discounted bus passes to people that are on public assistance. A really easy way to get that out there. And once again, transit-oriented development is a great tool, great way of thinking about increasing the density of housing along bus routes and where to extend bus routes to areas of increased density.
Catherine?
It's really easy for all of us to sit up here and come up with a plan for how we should fix this problem when, I'm gonna guess that none of us actually ride the bus. And I think before the next city council meeting where we are deciding anything that has to do with some form of transit development, whatever it is, we should go ride the bus. We should go down to those developments. We should have physical eyes on what it is that we're trying to approve. And Natalie and Nick, you're both sitting right there. When we were in Leadership Wilmington, one of the things Leadership Wilmington had us do was actually go get on the bus system and experience it. We were the only people on the bus. It is very complicated for anybody in our community to be able to get to where they need to be in a timely manner. If somebody wants to be downtown at 9:00 AM, they have to get on a bus at 6:00 AM and a lot of people have to walk more than a mile. It's an antiquated system. And like I said in the beginning, we need proactive, innovative leadership. We need to stop sitting around and letting problems fall in our lap before we come up with a solution. We need to start being proactive and owning our problems and fixing them before they start impacting our community.
David, I'm gonna start with you for this next question. In your opinion, how should a Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement be funded?
So number one, I will never support a tax or a toll to cross the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge or its successor. And number two, I think, as I've said again, as I've said before, we need a vision for how we can incorporate rail into our plans in Wilmington. So my vision for the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge is one that includes a cargo rail component so that we can divert cargo rail away from downtown and more quickly out into Brunswick County for the places it needs to go in Brunswick County. And we need to make sure that we have folks on the WMPO who are advocating for a solution that gets us a higher STIP score because we know that we need a higher score with the Department of Transportation. I believe that it does need to be a bridge that has six lanes. I think that it needs to be a bridge that includes pedestrian and bikeable solutions on either side, but we also need to be smart about where those pedestrian and bikeable solutions are going to go once they get into Brunswick County. It's quite a ways from the edge of the river until Eland proper.
John?
Politics. I think that, you know, the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge is such a critical artery for the entire southeastern North Carolina region. So the state of North Carolina owns that bridge. I think DOT got creative and innovative when they stepped in to buy a piece of property that was clearly gonna be in the path of the new bridge prior to that property being developed. And I know that sounds crazy from a business perspective, but that was very innovative for the state of North Carolina. They typically wait until the property's developed and they get to pay five times more, 10 times more to acquire the property. So I think it's things like that. And when I say politics, what I mean is projects in North Carolina are graded based on need, safety, congestion. We need to make sure that the need, that, that bridge services is at the top of the list. And the only way you do that is to continue to inundate NC DOT, our legislative group in the state, and the MPO.
Councilman Spears?
State and federal funds. And state and federal funds with a high level of community input. I think it's the only way that we, we actually do it and we get what we want.
Okay. Councilman, yeah, Councilman Anderson?
Well, I can tell you, for me, the same way every bridge is funded across the state, why should we be any different? Why should we have a toll and Charlotte doesn't? I mean, it makes no sense to me. We pay the same state taxes. But if you really wanna know the nuts and bolts of it, it's gonna be, you know, the state's gonna be 60, 80% with some grants from federal. And locally, we're gonna have to cough up some matching funds. That's the way it works. You know, whether that's 20, 40%, we need to be prepared for that financially. I've also already asked our city manager to start putting aside funds because this state DOT only takes a project to a certain level of beauty in our state. It's basic. Let's start saving some money locally to set aside to make it something we can be proud of and that it's something that we can add on to, to make it more architecturally pleasing to where we go, hey, that's the Wilmington Bridge. That's not just some random bridge on the interstate. So that's how, that's how it's gonna get done.
Celeb?
Yeah, I absolutely agree that this is a state project and we need to continue to work with the state and the WMPO to find the funding so that the taxpayers pay as little of the burden as possible. A toll is completely regressive. I was shocked to hear this morning the mayor say the percentage of people from Brunswick County that cross that bridge every day to do business in Wilmington. We put a toll on that and we are reducing the amount of people who are going to come to Wilmington to do business, which is bad, and also increase traffic on the other routes into Wilmington, which is, which is also bad. So absolutely work with the state and the WMPO to get the funding. Oh, and also the, I understand that the state is in their, their final environmental studies, consolidation studies, and pedestrian is absolutely part of it, very essential to have a pedestrian part of the bridge and to incorporate the rail, I think is absolutely essential.
Catherine?
I have zero experience in politics, but one thing I've learned is that in government, the more you ask questions, the less you get an answer. And I talked to Chad from the DOT yesterday and the more I asked him questions, it was kind of the same thing. He was talking to me about how the Coast Guard, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the federal highways, and the KAMA, the different departments that are all having to merge together to have input to the DOT before this can even get decided. He said that alone is going to take a year and a half or two before a decision gets made. And he said the bridge is currently unfunded through the traditional funding sources that we would normally get money for and that the two ways to either get the bridge are a toll, which would be a public-private partnership, which I am also against, but then a grant. But if they get a grant, they have to get 50% of the funding to match that grant that comes into place. And right now, the bridge without a rail option is considered at $400 million. And so he was telling me that the DOT is not even considering a rail option. And so I made a joke with him that the rail is gonna derail his project. But the idea of the fact that, okay, let's say we do get this in place, we spend the four, oh, sorry.
Marlo?
Yeah, I mean, I think clearly the, the funding of the bridge is gonna be a combination of local, state, and federal funds. I think, I think we all recognize that. I also think the situation we're in with the bridge is indicative, quite frankly, of our lack of influence at the state level. Let's just be honest with each other. And so when we look at the state improvement, a state transportation improvement plan, we are low on that list. What I bring to the table in my candidacy for Wilmington City Council is over three decades of experience in the public sector, the non-profit sector, and the private sector, working for two Fortune 50 companies, and working for a global manufacturing company. I have spent my entire career bringing people together to solve problems. And so I want to put that experience to use in my experience with working with elected officials and working with regulatory bodies and working with departments of transportation to make sure that we rise to the top of the list in terms of the state transportation improvement plan. And I look forward to doing that for each of you.
Let's see, are we on David again? Yes, sorry. Good. Oh, for the next question, yes, sorry. I lost, I lost my train. So yes, actually, the next question I want to ask you about, and starting with John, is whether, or what your vision is for that Northern Riverfront that the mayor was talking about earlier as far as, you know, this gateway that the city is working on and, and looking at developing with a partner?
Well, I, I think to pick up on what the mayor spoke of earlier this morning, it's, it's an opportunity for an amazing mixed-use project that has an affordable component that minimizes transportation impacts by virtue of its mixed-use and I think is a great gateway to our city. But most importantly, it's an example of a public-private partnership to increase our tax base. So the only way growth benefits us is to continue to increase the tax base, which is to keep our property taxes lower. So I think that provides a great opportunity. Hopefully, we'll talk about the Thermo Fisher Building in a minute.
Councilman Spears?
So I think you have to put something there that's welcoming to everybody in our community. So you're talking about affordable housing, you're talking about, I'll just be honest, I don't think that it'll be long before downtown gets a grocery store. I was in Raleigh over the weekend, well, no, Labor Day, and I was looking for Publix and there was this huge building and Publix was there and, you know, there was apartments on top of it and I, going in there, I said, man, I could see this for Wilmington. So I could see a project and I know we've had discussions about having a grocery store and, you know, mixed-use for apartments or whatever downtown. So I think that would be a great opportunity for us to do it there. So, I mean, I guess the, I'm not really concerned with the gateway. You may not wanna hear that, but, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned with what we'll do that will benefit the people of our community, so.
Councilman Anderson?
Well, I would tell you, I am concerned with the gateway project. I think it's gonna be the main entrance coming in from Martin Luther King, coming off the bypass. It's one of our main entrances and I want, the reason we got involved was to have a little bit of control to make it beautiful or something that's inviting. What slowed it down is real simple. Now there's a ton of office, and there's a bunch of open office space right next door and they were gonna build some office. They have to watch and watch the dust settle there. They were gonna build a parking deck. That's part of the public benefit that was gonna be there, the public-private partnership. Guess what? The city got a thousand spaces parking deck with that deal. So now they don't need that. So that's why it's taking a little time. It's pure economics, it's pure, what do we, what, what do we need there? But we'll get a hotel, we'll probably get a little office, we'll get some housing, and hopefully we'll get some nice outdoor dining, like the mayor said, some festival space, some place to go hang out before and after concerts where you don't, you know, you don't, that's what we're gonna end up with, that's the vision. It's just a matter of getting there. And interest rates, y'all all know about that, that slowed it down. We'll get there and it'll be soon.
Celeb?
Yeah, I think the gateway project is a fantastic opportunity to build a beautiful, welcoming entrance to our community from that direction. And I, I'm not concerned about the slowing down of the project. I, I don't think it's an emergency. It is gonna happen and it's, it's gonna bring a lot of economic development to the downtown.
Something we need to consider when we're talking about any of these projects, whether it's the gateway or the social district that we want, that there's foundational steps that go into play before we can have these great things. And one of those, it goes back to the vacancies we have with the police department. I've talked to Johnny Williams about the social district potential and he said he would need not only for the vacancies to be filled, but another 20 officers to be able to even sustainably do something like that. He's in support of it, but we need to fund that aspect. And we need to build better relationships within our police department to be able to keep that retention high so we can have beautiful projects like this. And that, to me, is what we need to focus on first.
Marlo?
Yeah, I mean, I think the gateway project is great and it's kind of bolstered by the acquisition of the Thermo Fisher Building. I mean, the, the northern build out of the northern part of downtown is critically important. It's gonna be a major entranceway into our city and so it should be a crown jewel. I think what is also heartening at the WDI conference that we just had was that there was a robust discussion of housing affordability as it related to the projects going on in the northern part of town that we recognize as a city, we've got to address that affordability issue. And as they talked about mixed-use developments, having a significant component around certain price points, around AMI, I think it's critically important. And so I think, you know, it needs to be built out in a way that benefits all Wilmingtonans and I think we're on the right path.
David?
So we're talking about the ideas that we all share, the vision that we all share for this project. And we're in the very early stages of it. You've heard us talk about different reasons that certain parts have already changed. So let me tell you what I will be guided by as we're looking at this project. Green space, green space, and green space. I will be guided by the need to have hotels so that we can increase our revenue in that way. I will be guided by the desire of Wilmington citizens to have centralized locations for receiving government services for when you have business to the city, you have one centralized location that you can go to. And making sure, again, as I have said before, with housing affordability, that our first responders, teachers, and nurses can afford to live and work in Wilmington, that this project should also incorporate a component that allows for housing affordability.
Okay. And this is gonna be our last question and I'm gonna start with you, Councilman Spears. The question is, what role do you think the city should play in recruiting businesses and talent to come to Wilmington?
Oh, I think that's a lot. We should be very instrumental in who we bring to this community and, and what we bring to this community. In the past four years, when economic development has come before the council, I always ask the tough questions, you know? And, and I look at the city as setting the standard for what we bring here. You've looked in the past four years, in the past year or two, we've raised the pay for city employees, you know? So there's a standard that, me as a councilman, that I wanna see from any employer that comes to this community. And you can ask any other business people in this room that I've had the conversations with, that is one of the number one things that I always ask. What are we doing? How, how are we gonna pay people? Because we set that standard. So economic development comes, what are you gonna do that's gonna, again, benefit the people of this community? How they live, how they play, you know, what happens in, in our area? You know, that, it affects everything, like crime. It, it just affects us wholly. And so the city has to be very instrumental in that. Red card again.
All right, Councilman Anderson?
Well, I, obviously, I think we should, the city has a role to play. I like our setup now. We work with citizens and people that know industry and are able to go out and recruit. We work with WBD, we help, I mean, Wilmington Business Development, which we support, I guess we're the biggest supporter as far as I know. Then we have Wilmington Downtown that focuses on downtown. We have the Film Commission and we also support the Entrepreneur Center at UNCW. They all touch different areas and different types of jobs that we're trying, whether it's entrepreneur-ing, building our film industry. I think our model is very good now. I think the first stop is usually the mayor's office, to be honest. I mean, that's where those people come. And then he and, and our city manager and they can push them in all those directions. We just need to, as a city, what we, continue what we've been doing as a city council, create an environment that is attractive, that is the envy of the rest of the state, that is drawing employers here. And I think we, we're involved to the level we should be.
Celeb?
Yeah, I, I think in the past, cities and counties, government entities have been very concerned with what I call economic big game hunting, going out and bagging that, that big game, that big company that's gonna come in. And for that, we do have great economic development partners like Wilmington Business Development. But I think we also need to be concerned about economic gardening, which is making it, which is the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at, at UNCW, which is giving people the tools to build the businesses that are already here, giving them the tools to succeed and, and to grow right here in Wilmington. The other thing that we need to remember is that the world has changed very much, both before, starting before the pandemic, but the pandemic just accelerated it. We have a huge remote workforce now. And so we have couples that are bringing in $300,000 a year and they can live wherever they want and many of them want to live in Wilmington and that's good for us.
It's our responsibility to recruit the talent that we want here. And the PPD building is a perfect example of the prime real estate not being a government entity before, an incredible company to come here and actually be up there. But in addition to recruiting talent, it's retaining But in addition to recruiting talent, it's retaining talent. We have incredible companies here, and I'm going to point out Genesis Block, we've got Tracy and Gerard over there, and Cloudwise, Sean, you're over here, and if David Reiser is somewhere in this room, he's got opia-ed. The reason I'm saying those names is because those are three companies that are innovative and incredible, and they're having to go outside of our community consistently to be able to get their needs met, and we, as a community, should be supporting them 100%. Instead of our budget recreating government roles to get them out of business, we need to be giving them more business locally and supporting businesses like theirs, so that way our community grows. And yes, as we bring in talent, they're most likely the people that are going to hire them, or at least mentor them about the success in Wilmington.
Marlo.
So, our role in attracting business ties to two primary issues in this campaign. The first is housing affordability. If a company is going to take the time to relocate its workforce here or establish its business here, it has to know that its employees can afford the housing that's in the community. The second is public safety. As I said earlier, I've been significantly concerned by the spike in gun violence that we've seen over the last few weeks in Wilmington. That's a significant concern. And again, if a company is looking at relocating its employees here or establishing itself here, it has to know that the community is safe. And the third area is around the trade disciplines, as we talked about earlier, and the technical expertise. If a company is locating here, they're going to need to know that the technical expertise and the talent pipeline is available in the community to support their company's efforts. So, again, thinking about things like electricians and HVAC and welders, all of which are good-paying jobs. So, I think that's the important role that the city can play to make sure that we nurture the environment for companies to come here.
David.
So, just as I'm the son of two retired public school teachers, I'm also the grandson of an electrician and a plumber on either side of my family who started their own small businesses. So, I've seen firsthand what it means to run a small business. I remember plumbing with my grandfather during the day and then coming home and learning the books for my grandmother in the evening. And I know that small businesses are the backbone of our economy nationally and right here in Wilmington. So, as we're cultivating small businesses, I appreciate the work that goes into that and the needs of small businesses, and I agree that the government, or, excuse me, Wilmington City Council does need to have a hands-on approach to fostering those relationships. What kind of jobs would I specifically aim to recruit from, or recruit to Wilmington? We've alluded to the important work that UNCW's innovation labs are doing. Those exist in universities and colleges all across our state. As I've said before, we have a unique opportunity in wind, solar, kinetic energy right here to bring the green rush to Wilmington, North Carolina. That is the generation that is going to lead that industry, that is the generation that is going to grow that industry, and each of those labs need to know that we are ready for them to come and build it up here in Wilmington.
Now, John.
I think just as important as what city council can do to foster economic development, it's what it shouldn't do to deter it. I think we need to make sure that this city is a great place to do business. I think we need to make sure that we are not over-regulating any type of business within the city to deter people from coming here to do business. The reality is, everything that we, all of us up here today have talked about ties into job creation. For me personally, I'm not about bagging the elephant. I don't want another PPD. I want 50 small businesses to relocate to Wilmington. That provides continuity, that provides economic opportunity for everybody, and all of the things, if it's affordable housing, public safety, all of those are critical to attracting good-paying jobs to our region and finishing the 2014 transportation bond projects. And the fact that I got to sit next to the namesake for the new bridge.
Thank you very much. Let's have a round of applause for the council candidates.